Palermo. Festerson, Harding, Jaram, Melton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing today for our invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, today, today we've had a, we're going to have a really good day in terms of the weather. It's been nice. We had a couple of times where some of our power went out last week. There were some concerns about that, but we have a top-notch energy organization as well as a good city government. And so, let's just hope that we have a good meeting today and thank you all for being here.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
And ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for attending this city council meeting. The council thanks you for being here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Now, there are a couple of things I want to say before we get started today. There's one group that I would like to recognize a little bit, but I wanted to let everybody in the audience know that two of our members are not going to be here today. It's not that they're sitting down on the other end because I didn't shower today, because I did, and I just wanted you all to know that. But the other thing I wanted to say off just very quickly is that we have a group called Yaseely that's here and this, the, this organization is the Young Southeast Asia Leadership Initiative. And they are here for a five-week leadership training institute at the University of Nebraska at Omaha, one of our, one of our very prestigious colleges here in the state of Nebraska. And I would just like for our young leaders of tomorrow from Southeast Asia to stand up and be recognized, please. I had an opportunity to speak with them earlier. They are a very energetic group. They like to have fun and have a good time, which is something that those of us who work with them really enjoy. So, thank you all for being here. And I just, just so you all know, I just passed a resolution that made them honorary citizens of the city of Omaha. So, they are honorary citizens. Again, thank you all for being here. Madam Clerk.
Items six to nine relate to the same project and can be considered together for Stone Creek at Blue Sage located northwest of 204th Street and Blue Sage Parkway. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item six, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to R6 District. Item seven, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Item eight, a resolution to approve the final plat for Stone Creek at Blue Sage. Item nine, a resolution to approve the Stone Creek at Blue Sage subdivision agreement.
Public hearing on agenda items number six through nine of today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 1144 West Center Road appearing on behalf of the applicant. We're simply here to answer any questions that you might have regarding this proposed development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items six through nine, there are no lights. Roll call.
Palermo. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items six to nine are approved, five to zero. Item ten, an application to consider, a Class C liquor license for Retro Rewind, Inc., doing business as Retro Rewind, located at 15475 Rogel Street, Suites 108 to 109, A's Communication, Opposition.
Public hearing on agenda item number ten is today. Proponents, please.
Thomas Green, 11311 Chicago Circle. I'm here on behalf of the proponent and to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard on item ten? Are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item ten, no lights. Roll call.
Palermo. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item ten is approved, five to zero. Item eleven, an application to consider, a Class C liquor license for SCL Joneses, Inc., doing business as Joneses Taco House, located at 1502 South 60th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number eleven is today. Proponents, please.
Jan Hidley appearing for Joneses, 711, south, or north, 108th Court, Omaha.
Thank you.
And I'm here with James Ochoa, who is one of the, Mr. Jones's children who are taking over the business. And basically, they've been in business 25 years. And his father is now retiring and moving the business to the children. And so, we have to apply for a new liquor license. And we'd ask your approval. And James is here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item eleven, no lights. Roll call.
Palermo. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eleven is approved, five to zero.
Thank you.
Item twelve, an application to consider, a Class D liquor license for Nizner, Inc., doing business as PetroMart, located at 6508 John J. Pershing Drive.
Public hearing on agenda item number twelve is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, I'm Matt Lebincott with PetroMart, 6508 Pershing Drive. Just requesting application for an upgrade to a liquor license, seeking here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Palermo. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twelve is approved, five to zero. Item thirteen, an application to consider, a Class D liquor license for SNJ, Inc., doing business as Tobacco Hut, number nineteen, located at 6206 Ames Avenue, A's Communication. Requesting this item be laid over to the October 30th meeting. B's Communications, in opposition.
Thank you. Public hearing on agenda item number thirteen is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. We ask this to be continued because we weren't going to have a full house. In fact, Councilman Plon will fool me, he made it, but I thought we were only going to have four people here. So, for that, we've asked to, to lay it over. And if someone testifies today, I'd like to write to rebut it if need be.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
I wouldn't close the public hearing. I would continue the public hearing.
No, we will continue the public hearing until next week. But we'll, I guess this move is to lay it over.
I'll move to lay over and continue public hearing.
Moved and seconded to lay over item thirteen and continue the public hearing. Roll call.
Palermo. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Item fourteen, an application to consider in addition for Mercury LLC, doing business as Mercury, to add an outdoor area approximately 61 feet by 7 feet to the south to their Class C liquor license located at 329 South 16th Street, A's Communications and Support.
Public hearing on agenda item number fourteen is today. Proponents, please.
Clark Ross from Mercury, 329 South 16th. We are just simply adding a patio to our existing liquor license, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding.
I'm sorry, that was, that was so long.
Oh, okay. All right. Is there a motion?
I'll give you a real one.
Moved and seconded to approve item fourteen, no lights. Roll call.
Palermo. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item fourteen is approved, five to zero. Item fifteen, an application to consider in addition for Todorovich Management Company, doing business as Starskis, to add an outdoor area approximately 40 feet by 36 feet to the south to their Class C liquor license located at 7812 F Street, A's Communication from the Chief Building Inspector regarding permits.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifteen is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, I'm Kristy Todorovich, Todorovich Management, doing business as Starskis at 7812 F Street, here to answer any questions and asking, requesting for outdoor additional license.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Colin Brenacca, Colliers International. I'm here representing John Schrammick, who owns the building adjacent 7810 F Street. Mr. Schrammick is out of town. He does not object to the outdoor garden. His concerns, that he wishes noted in record, is parking from Starskis and how it overflows into his on occasion. And he needs some assurances that this will not be exacerbated by the new beer garden.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, do you wish to, you need to answer that question?
Just that I didn't informally speak with him and it might, we're aware of it. I'm aware of it personally. I talked to him personally just last week and am full agreement. Because of the parking situation, we're not losing any parking, but I understand that at times there has been people that inadvertently have parked over there. So, yes, I have to be foregoing and posting some signage that it's not our property, staying on our lot, because it's, there's no fence or divider or anything, announcing that currently. But, yeah, I'm going to abide by his wishes and be a good neighbor for that.
So, at this point, you're just talking about posting signs saying no parking?
At this point, yeah. Well, part of the fence would be, that we're wanting to do and get a permit for would be partially separating our lot to his lot. So, that'll take up a pretty good chunk of where the people are going through to park. But there may be, you know, I can't say specifically because the fence company hasn't drawn the exact measurements. But yes, I'm more than willing to abide by not parking over there and make sure that our customers are aware of that as well.
All right. Thank you. With that, we'll close the public hearing. Ms. Melton.
And I just want to note, so you, and you haven't gotten your permits yet.
I have not. The fence, I did go and talk to the building and planning and ask what kind of requirements to were required. And actually, the fence company is drawing up the actual plot or measurements and submitting the permit for us as well.
Okay. But, and some of those things may be addressed when you're getting your permits with our planning department. But I also have another question for you, because it came up. There's currently some judgments against you from the city and it looks, it appears that you're, I assume you're collecting the taxes that are due from customers?
Yep. And I did talk to Yopin Hawkins about doing the payment plan. There is a collection account that I'm making monthly payments on, but yes, yes. So, I have been working with her on those as well.
And I guess my, my concern is, and I understand when you're running a small business, you know, the numbers are tight and it can be a struggle to sometimes pay everything that you need to pay. But, you know, unlike property taxes or something that are due, you're actually collecting the money. So, in essence, you're making a profit off your customers and then not submitting the taxes. So, and I think the amount due, and I'll have somebody from accounting correct me if I'm wrong, but it's close to $20,000.
Okay. And see, and that, I didn't realize how much, but I do know, like I said, I have the collection account, which I think is part of that from along, from past, at a different location as well. That's a monthly payment. And then I did talk with her about getting current because it was an oversight for so long that it's so large. But if, and then should continue to make the back payments and then continue to go current forward on, you know, now and just get the payment plan for the past due.
And I don't know if this is my place, but I might make a suggestion. So, in my other job, I'm an attorney. And when we take money from people or clients that's supposed to go to somebody else, we put it in what's called a trust account.
Yes.
So, we don't have, we can't, we can't use it to pay our bills for our firm or our employees or payroll, because it's not, it's not our money. So, we put it into an account. So, perhaps you might want to, since this is kind of so difficult, at the end of the night, you've collected the money. So, maybe you should put it, have a separate account, maybe like a tax account, because technically, that's not the money that you've collected. It doesn't necessarily belong to you. It belongs to kind of the taxpayers of Omaha and all the other businesses and restaurants. They, they pay it. So, you're kind of taking advantage or putting them at a disadvantage by keeping the money that is due to the city, that all of the other bars and restaurants pay.
Right. Right. And I understand that currently, and that's what I'm trying to work with her on, let's get this, you know, cured so moving forward that I can be organized with the things and do the right things. It's just right now that the amount, like you had said, is huge. I need to do that payment and then move forward going in an organized trust fund or moving forward, continue down the right path of.
Right. But it's, and I don't mean to hammer this, but it's so large because you haven't paid, I think it dates back to 2012.
Right.
And then, so I think, you know, when, there's no real right to have necessarily a liquor license. And I think we need to make sure that the people that do have it are following the rules and that we're not favoring one establishment over the other. And I think by, by asking for an expansion of your license when you're not doing what all the other bars do and restaurants and everybody else, then it, I think it gives you an advantage over all of them. And at this point in time, you literally have made a profit off the taxpayers and the customers of your business.
Okay. I understand.
And so, you know, at this point in time, I would like, first of all, since there haven't been permits, I would like to see, I would like to definitely see the permits before I would be likely to approve of this, of expanding your liquor license. This isn't in my district, so I will, I will defer to the council member as to what he would like to do. I would support laying it over, but if, if, if that's what the council's inclined to do. But right now, because there is no permits, in addition, I think some of these other concerns about the advantage you're getting that other restaurants don't, I'm just a little concerned about approving that today.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. That was a question I had as well. Finance, Mr. Curtis, please.
Oh, I did look back there. I'm sorry. Mr. Curtis is down here. Don Walder, City Treasurer.
Is there a way to verify that there is a payment plan as stated?
Yes, we, we spoke to MCA, which is the City Collection Agency, and there was a payment plan. However, there have been no payments on that since July. There is also two judgments that are not being paid on. We were told yesterday, Ms. Hawkins was told yesterday, that they, there was going to be a payment made on our online system for April 18th through August 18th, which was also not done. So, right now, the amount is in excess of $24,000, let's do, between the two entities.
Okay. Thank you. So, how do you think we could get this cleared up? If you're saying you're on the payment plan, but city's saying that you're not.
Well, yeah. I mean, I absolutely will do another if I didn't. They, it was just automatic monthly payment with MCA is what I had. And I can do another with that as well, or continue that, because I think that they're just separated in different timeframes from what I understand. And I just recently been on the phone with several people about this, so.
So, let me ask you, can we lay it over? Would it factor in to anything? To lay it over, let me get some more facts. Let me see exactly what's going on.
She has her liquor license now, so it won't affect her.
Right. Just the permit. Okay. Would you be fine with that? So, we can clear up some things and then maybe come back?
Yep.
Instead of the will of the council, which I'm not sure. Obviously, we're in favor of small businesses, but there's this other part that makes it difficult right now.
Okay.
So, I would ask to lay this over. One week, would that be enough to get what you need to get in order and then we can verify that it is set up?
Yeah. I mean, yeah. If that, is that, the payment plan's absolutely done, the current paid. I mean, what other, do I need to meet privately with some, you know, people and?
Probably.
Get an agenda, get a plan?
Yeah. That way, when you come back, the stories that are being told, they're, they're lining up.
Gotcha. Okay.
For planning purposes, I'm not sure that's the time to get the permits.
Oh, for, no.
Oh. Were you thinking about putting that in this fall with it's set in?
Not necessarily. I know when I did talk to permits, they said it usually takes six to eight weeks even to get that accomplished. So, I don't know, are you wanting to, to wait that or just submit the permit? It's kind of.
I think the longer the better, then we can see that the, you're getting caught up on what's in the rayers and go from there, so.
We meet twice in November, on the sixth or the 20th, with the 20th?
Sure. How about 20th of November?
Of November. Okay.
Lay it over to the 20th?
Please.
Do you want to continue the public hearing?
Yeah, we probably better continue the public hearing so we can ask some more questions.
Okay. And it's been, Mr. Pauls, you seconded? Right. Okay. There's still another light on. Mr. Harding.
President Gray, I will blabber this a little bit. Was I correct to hear you say that you had a previous establishment or previous location that you had a similar that you're paying on?
That's still part of this, actually. That's part of this.
Explain that to me, please. Where was, where was the previous location?
On 13th Street.
And so, at 13th Street, you were also not paying the tax?
Yeah. I think it was just the end of 2013 or something, but what had happened is, yes, and that was foreclosed. That was, we don't have anymore. But yes, that was both, I believe, is part.
Okay.
I think there's some part. I don't know how much.
All right. Well, it's concerning to me to hear you say that and then it's continuing at another location. And the payments aren't being made. On top of that, as, as Councilmember Melton explained, you're benefiting or you're profiting really off of that. And the other one who's not getting the benefit of that is the city, because by sending parts of these to collection, the city is not realizing the revenue from what it is properly due. And if it were a vote today, I would be voting to deny this request. I guess when we come back after, after permits are issued, then I'll consider it then. But again, I think it's, I'm upset to hear that the city is, is losing out on the revenues that it's due because we've had to send this to collections. And to hear that you say you're making payments and then we're told that no payments have been made since July, gives me very little confidence to, to order a permit to your benefit and at the, really, the others who are playing by the rules, you know, to have you benefit when you're not playing by the rules, I don't think is fair. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further lights and I know it's been moved and seconded to lay over, but let me add just a comment as well. My concerns are along the lines of Mr. Harding's. You know, to have two businesses and to have both of them not paying the appropriate taxes is a problem for, for this council and it's a problem for the city when we're not getting the revenues that we should be getting. So, on the, when we meet on the 20th, when we get back together on the 20th, among the things that I'm going to want to see besides the permits is that you've made at least one or two payments.
Right.
All right?
Yes.
Okay. We got to, we got to show some good faith here.
Oh, absolutely. I'm just wondering, should I, do you, do I need to wait longer than that and get a record bill? Would that start over? Is that a better?
I think with us, you just need to start making some payments, you know, so that we can approve this, if we're going to approve it. But, you know, to see nothing and to hear from our finance department that arrangements were set up and they're still not being met, you know, in a regular business setting, you know what that would mean. So, I think we need to, I think we need to see some good faith effort at this point.
Gotcha.
All right? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to lay over two weeks. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Just to lay over to the November 20th?
Just lay over till November 20th, I'm sorry.
Palermo. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Item 16, a request to appoint Jeffrey D. Laird as manager of How We Doan LLC, doing business as the Omaha Lounge, to their pending Class I liquor license located at 1505 Farnham Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 16 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Jeff Lures from Omaha Lounge, 1505 Farnham Street, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Palermo. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 16 is approved, five to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items number 17 through 20 were held on October 16, 2018. You want to take 17 off? So, the motion would be for 18, 19, and 20, if there's a motion. Moved and seconded to approve 18, 19, and 20 on our consent agenda. No lights. Roll call.
Palermo. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 18 through 20 are approved, five to zero. Item 17, an ordinance to accept a price agreement in the amount of $898,115 with B&amp;W Company, Inc., for machine sweeping services to be in effect from 2019 through 2023.
Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do see Mr. Rouser in the crowd if he'd like to answer, or Mr. Stube. As you're coming up, I'll just ask. So, obviously, we have a looming, we have a contract coming up where we're going to have to look at all of these even closer than we normally do to see where we can save money for the city. So, when I see that this contract comes for an outside company to do street sweeping, when I know we have street sweepers ourself in the city and I assume we have the workforce to operate these street sweepers, I just scratched my head on this $900,000 contract, wondering we, why we can't do it ourself. If you could tell me a little bit of the background on, because I know at one time we didn't have sweepers, so we did contract, but then we purchased street sweepers, we as a city did. And it's, and now, and we did the street sweeping ourself, I believe, but now we're back to contracting. I just, I just wanted to make sure that this is really what we need and I guess, tell me if we do need it, why we couldn't do all the street sweeping ourself.
Austin Rouser, Omaha Public Works. So, the history on this is we've never, we've never 100% self-reformed. As you had mentioned, we did originally all contract street sweeping. We did begin buying sweepers several years ago, predates me being here. And so, we do have, we do have about six brooms in our fleet that we operate. We operate those on two shifts, have a day shift and a night shift. We don't have the capability with six brooms to handle the total curb miles in the city. And so we do contract to supplement our operation. Our operation, we have basically a level of service that we meet, and that is two times a year we sweep all residential streets. There's a spring sweep, which is very aggressive. It starts generally around mid-March. And we shoot to have that tied up by the end of May. We've met our goals on that as long as, as long as I've been here. The fall sweep is a little more lax, and that is, starts right after the Fourth of July. We call it the fall sweep, but it's the second cycle, essentially. That sweep, again, we contract less of that second sweep. So it goes from approximately the Fourth of July until the end of October is generally what our, what our goal is for that sweep. In addition to those sweeps of all the residential streets, we also sweep on a roughly monthly cycle. We sweep all the major streets that have curbs and also all the business districts. And so we go through those roughly once a month. That's the nature of our operation right now, and it's the way that it's been for. I think this contract is replacing the last one it was on, I believe, a three-year with, it was renewed. I'm not sure of the numbers, but it's been a long time that we've been operating with B&amp;W and the contract in the past. So essentially, what we're asking for with this contract is just to continue the operation as it was. We could, we could supplement the operation to self-perform what it would take from the city's standpoint. We would probably need to add roughly eight sweepers. That's an initial spend of about two million dollars that we would need to add. Putting those on two shifts requires sixteen operators, probably two more foremen. So you're looking at an annual expenditure of, you know, in the neighborhood of a quarter million dollars on just personnel costs. The other thing to keep in mind with brooms, they have a very short lifespan. They're exposed to a lot of hazards, a lot of dust, a lot of chemicals. So brooms roughly operate on about a five-year cycle. So if we had a fleet, think if we had a fleet, just for the numbers to be easy, of fifteen brooms, we're looking at replacing three a year. That's about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year, just in replacement costs to keep that going. You've got on top of that fuel, you've got disposal charges for the sweepings. I don't know, I don't know how we could operate any more efficiently, more cost efficiently than what we do with the contract, the supplemental contract with B&amp;W.
Okay, thank you. So tell me the staff you have for the sweepers now, so you have?
So we have, our staff for the sweepers, we run six sweepers, day and night, two shifts. So there's six drivers, but there's eight on each shift because we also have people who run dump trucks to collect the sweepings and take them to the disposal sites. So eight people on each shift, and then there's a foreman for each shift as well.
And that's, that's who's out there now doing the area that you talked about, the business districts and the major streets?
That's the responsibility that the city has, is handling the business districts, the major streets, and then, you know, the bulk portion of the first and second residential cycles.
So that level of service that we're providing, the question is now, our six sweepers, and I'm asking because I had constituents that seen this on here, and they said, we haven't seen our street sweepers out. What's going on? So you're telling me that we have our six sweepers out with the foreman and the workforce doing the business districts and the major streets now with that level of service that we are providing?
So when you ask right now, are you asking, do we continue with this program the way that it is? Is this, is this our program? Or are you specifically referring to today? Do we have them out today? Because we are in a temporary.
Well, maybe not today, but I know we do the spring and fall. But then you also mentioned in between, on a reoccurring basis, approximately monthly, we do the business in major streets. So say this month or the past month, did we do those business in major streets?
Yes.
We did as a city?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, I know I asked you some questions before and you got me the answers, I appreciate it. I still, and I hear the numbers, but I'm hearing that it's the heavy spring, heavy fall, we're in between. Somebody at one time had to say, hey, let's buy these sweepers to save money. And without having this other company, and maybe it was before you, and I'm not sure. Maybe Mr. Stube could answer that, because the question I have, did we ever as a city do all the sweeping ourself?
Bob Stube, Public Works. So when I started back in two thousand five, a hundred percent of the street sweeping was done by an outside contractor. Part of the problem we ran into with that outside contractor is that he was limited with regard to the months of operation. So we would run into situations where we would have no snow in February. We would have sand and gravel on the street. But that contractor, by contractor, wouldn't have to start until the timeframe that Mr. Rouser indicated. So in order for us to have more flexibility with regard to providing that particular type of service and to also allow us to address a lot of different special events that might occur, whether it was College World Series, you know, the festivals that might occur in the downtown area, we deemed it necessary for us to be able to provide that level of service to go ahead and buy street sweepers ourselves, to hire the personnel to be able to operate it. And so essentially, we supplemented the contract that's been in place for a number of years with our own staff.
Thank you, so we never did the street sweeping entirely ourself as a city?
Absolutely not. As I mentioned, when I started here, it was a hundred percent being done by a contractor.
Okay, and then I'm sure that these street sweepers aren't that old, so they probably have some kind of tracking device on them that these people that are reaching out saying, hey, I'm just not seeing them. There's a, there's a way to get this information so I can relay back to them to say, no, this is, this is where they're at. This is when they're working, this month, this week, this day, ongoing?
For the city crews, they are equipped with ABL, that's correct. The contractors are not.
Right, so we, our city sweepers have that capability to get this information, to show that our workforce is out there doing what we're told them we're going to do as a level of service?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pauls.
Starting to make me think a little bit here. How many years is this contract? Is this a three- or four-year contract?
This is a five, it's extendable, I believe.
But what I'm saying for the, basically nine hundred thousand dollars, it's a, how many years does that take care of?
That's the annual cost.
Well, that is the annual cost. Well, by reading, it is a little bit misleading. So for that number of years, it's basically nine hundred thousand year, nine hundred thousand next year, nine hundred thousand the next year. Because I had the same question from people living in my area that they, and I drive my area a lot. And you'd think at least once in my drive through my area that I probably would have spotted a street sweeper. I would like to know, because you do this with us on the snow removal. We know who is contracting in our area, so I'm assuming this one company does the whole city. Somehow, you have to know their schedule.
We know the approximate schedule, they don't, let me be clear about that, they don't do the whole city. We assign them areas. So that fall sweep, they take about half of the city. For the, for the spring, they're in about two-thirds of the city.
Okay, see, so that's, that's where I see, I thought, I was under the impression that for that amount of money, they did the, not the major areas, because the city takes care of that, but the, but the housing areas is by this company?
They supplement our forces for that. They're in addition to what the city does.
Okay. So in my area, I may see a city person or this company?
Correct, it could be, it could be one or the other.
Okay.
I would have to check assignments.
No, and I'm not, I'm just, I'm like my fellow over here, it'd be nice to be able to say something, hey, this is happening. Now, on our city equipment, you can tell where they've been?
We can with ABL, yeah.
And on this private company, they do not have that ability?
They do not.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melton.
And I just have one question. So I know our snow plows, and when we do our snow plowing, we have inspectors that go out to check and make sure that it's been done. Do we have any checks for the independent contractor to make sure that the streets we told them to sweep actually got swept? Do we have the city inspectors that go out and check that?
Yes, we have foremen that check that.
That's what the foremen do?
That's one of their jobs, yes.
Okay, and that's, that's what I wanted to make sure, because I think that's where we're going is, right? Did they actually do, when we sent them out there, did the street get swept?
I have large piles of broom dumps that are becoming more difficult to dispose of, that I could show you.
Okay, you've got evidence, evidence of the sweeping.
I promise you that.
Thank you.
Thank you, is there a motion? Moved and seconded to approve item seventeen, no further lights, roll call.
Palermo. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seventeen is approved, four to one.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, next thing up is the, yeah. The public hearing on agenda items numbers twenty-one through twenty-four is today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, your address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items twenty-one through twenty-four, no lights, roll call.
Palermo. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items twenty-one to twenty-four approved, five to zero. Item twenty-five, in ordinance amending the Blackstone Business Improvement District to expand the boundaries of the district, to change the assessment methodology to one based on valuation, to increase the budget of the BID, and to allow for an annual escalator, and to create exemptions from the expenses of the BID, as an amendment of the whole requested by the law department.
And there's a request by Councilmember Jaram to read, to lay over until we had a full council on October thirtieth. Moved and seconded to lay over to October thirtieth, and roll call.
Palermo. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Item twenty-six, a resolution to approve a settlement in the amount of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the pending lawsuit entitled Reverend S. Williams versus City of Omaha.
Public hearing agenda item number twenty-six is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Oh, you had a question, I'm sorry, Mr. Palermo.
You know what, I don't have the information, is, could somebody answer? Is this the one where the, we as a city, something happened, knocked over, and it didn't get put back up? Is that saying too much? Is this the one, or is it another one? Stop sign?
Alan Teal with the law department, yes, that's correct. This is, this was the case with the knockdown stop sign.
Okay, and then if I could ask you again, so let's say Chuckles, for example. If they're reported, we have a certain amount of time to fill them before, you know, if somebody puts a claim in that we can say yes or no, because we weren't notified. Do stop signs and different signals, do they follow along those same lines procedurally?
Yes, I think they would. The statute says that for spot defects, if we know, have knowledge of them, we're required to repair them in a reasonable period of time. And that would probably cover both potholes and a downed stop sign.
And you feel that this wasn't addressed in a reasonable amount of time? And we would be liable as a city if it moved forward?
Yes, I'm not familiar with the exact time period in this case, but our attorney that was handling this and looked into it determined that, yes, a reasonable time period had passed.
Okay, so then it sounded like a broken record trying to save the city money, because that's what we need to do. What do we do in different procedurally in that department or any department when we know a stop sign or anything is knocked over and we're required to put it back in a certain amount of time? Have we changed procedure on that, or have we learned from this?
I'm not sure, this, I believe that this began with the police being called to the scene. And the stop sign was down, and the police allegedly failed to contact anybody to have some kind of temporary replacement sign put up. As far as remedial measures that we've taken, I'm not, I'm not sure what we've done on that.
It's probably something we should look into then, especially, it sounds kind of open-ended where we say, whoa, there was a sign that was down. We don't know if it was reported, we don't know how busy the police were that night. Maybe it was, maybe somewhere in the channels. But this seems with where we live, with our inclement weather, that this could happen pretty often. And I don't want to see us here every single year where a stop sign gets knocked down and we don't have something set in stone where, yes, we should have it up by this certain amount of time or this many hours to have us as a city be protected. So I guess I'm asking, is there something where it's not just a reasonable amount of time? Is there like a day set so we can get this out to different parts of the city to make sure this doesn't happen again?
It really depends on the circumstances. I don't think the law says it's a day or two days or a week. In this case, I can have the attorney check and see if the failure was a lack of a policy. And if that's the case, we can look into working with the police to adopt a policy. Or it may have been the case that the policy was in place, that police are required to contact Public Works in the event of a sign that was down and that was just missed in this case. Could have been either one of those two scenarios.
Sure, because this seems like something that we could get on top of and hopefully not have it happen again, including the part of, you know, somebody getting hurt, which we definitely don't want to see, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, it's interesting, because I know somebody who works for the county, and they say anytime a sign is put down, the Douglas County Police Sheriff's Department notifies somebody in the county. So they apparently, they do have a system that somebody's contacted, and then they go out there, because I know the person who puts up those signs. And so I said, how do you get alerted to that? He said, typically, somebody driving around, if they're not working for the county, the deputy sheriff, they say, calls in, says, hey, there's a sign down here. Just, they're just, they do have a system, apparently we do not. As you indicated, if we do, it's, it wasn't used at least that one time. I don't know, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
I think I moved in clearly.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item number twenty-six, there are no further lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-six is approved, five to zero. Item twenty-seven, a resolution to approve a settlement in the amount of sixty-four thousand dollars for the pending lawsuit entitled Richard W. Potts versus City of Omaha.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-seven is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item twenty-seven, no lights, roll call.
Palermo. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-seven is approved, five to zero. Item twenty-eight, in ordinance approving a redevelopment tax increment financing loan agreement with Urban Chirel LLC for the Urban Chirel condominium's tax increment financing redevelopment project plan located at seven one four South Fifteenth Street, in amount up to three hundred and forty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-eight is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item twenty-nine, in ordinance approving a redevelopment tax increment financing redevelopment agreement with Barn West LLC for the Drummond Motor Company and Firestone Tire Buildings' tax increment financing redevelopment project plan located at two five seven zero and two five six six Farnham Street, in amount up to one million eighty thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-nine is today, proponents please.
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Yes, Mike Peter, three eight one four Farnham, Clarity Development, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item thirty, in ordinance approving a redevelopment tax increment financing redevelopment agreement with Dahl Monroe's LLC to implement the Dahl Monroe's Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at one nine zero three South Seventh Street, in amount up to one million eight hundred thousand dollars.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty is today, proponents please.
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, Brent Beller, one one four four West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the project applicant, here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item thirty-one, in ordinance approving a redevelopment tax increment financing redevelopment agreement with Triangular Holdings LLC to implement the Grace University Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at one three one one South Ninth Street, in amount up to two million seven hundred and eighty-six thousand ninety-five dollars.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-one is today, proponents please.
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer questions you may have.
Yeah, I think you see you guys playing musical chairs, too.
Thank you.
Any other proponents?
Yeah, Scott Simrad, seventeen fifty South Eighty-Fifth Avenue, just here to answer questions you may have.
Thank you, Scott. Any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item thirty-two, in ordinance approving an amendment to the Uptown District Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement for the acquisition of additional parcels to construct eighteen new row houses to be added to project phase one, increasing the original TIF loan amount to five million eighty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-two is today, proponents please.
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer questions you may have. But I also, just as a refresher, the amendment to the TIF redevelopment project plan for the Uptown District was. District was approved back in, I believe, 2016. And then, last year, the developer, as he's been developing in that area, has had the opportunity to purchase more property and expand the, the size and the scope of this project. It's originally four phases, it's still four phases, but this amendment, which was, again, approved last year by the council, the plan was approved last year, increased the first phase from 21 units to 39. So it was an addition of 18. And I just wanted to, I asked the developer to prepare this for me. Can you zoom out on this, just maybe to refresh, and hopefully, this will make a little more sense? Just a little bit more, if you can. Okay. So this is the original phasing, supposed to represent the original phasing. So what you see here in the green is the first phase. This is cut off. So green here, first phase, I believe the blue is phase two.
The original was the...
The red is, sorry, red is phase two, was phase two, rather. The blue was phase three, and then the yellow is phase four. And there may be something cut off on here. I apologize for that. So as he's been developing in that area and purchasing more lots, this is what it currently looks like. So again, back with phase one, with the green, and then here's the additional 18 units. So that phase one was expanded. Why we call it Phase One B, because it's adjacent to Phase One. And then, what he's done is, because he's in this area, he's moving this to phase two. So he's just going to make this phase two. The blue will now be phase three. The yellow remains phase four. So that is just kind of a, just kind of to orient. And then, this is just a more drilled-in view of phase one. So again, this was the original, phase one. These were the sites. And then, phase one with Phase One B. This is Phase One B, the additional 18 units. So again, this particular agreement is simply to ask the council to implement the amendment to the project plan that was approved by the council last year. So with that, if I can answer any questions, I'm here.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to note, for the record, that those last five items, those last five projects, are over $40 million of investment within the 480 loop, which is, I think, you know, our planning department, planning board, and, and the developers who are taking the risk to invest in, in the inner city, I think is commendable.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 33, an ordinance to approve a five-year purchase agreement with Axon Enterprise, Inc., in the total amount of $371,325 for the purchase of 65 new tasers, holsters, and companion equipment.
Public hearing agenda item number 33 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 34, an ordinance to accept a bid from Great Plains Realty Auction Company to provide auctioneering services for the Omaha Police Department impound facility for a period of five years.
Public hearing agenda item number 34 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 35, an ordinance to approve the acceptance of the fiscal year 2017 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program Operations and Safety Award, in the total amount of $904,050, from September 5th, 2018 to September 4th, 2019, to provide funding for an automated stretcher and lift systems.
Public hearing agenda item number 35 is today. Proponents, please.
Bill Bernard, Omaha Fire, just here to answer questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Non-action items, items 36 through 64, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date. The item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Motion adjourned. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 2:54.